You guys start down here since you guys are all prepared.
Yeah, Andrew.
We're going to give you guys a wireless mouse.
Thank you.
To the power point.
Yes.
Hey.
Hey.
Down there.
I'm going to just push them out of the way so no one hears us.
I know. Go ahead. I'm trying to see. She's on vacation this week, so I'm going to fill in this week.
Good filling.
Yeah. Been awhile since I still remember how to do all that. Feedback comes a little.
Thirty seconds. Oh, just a whisper means.
Yeah. Oh, my. Yeah, sorry.
No, that's all right. Don't worry.
Thank you.
Presenting the therapy and using this.
Right. Okay. Okay. Yep. Sorry. That's the word.
This'll work when you need it. You can see it up on the monitors. Michael, switch it on.
This will be when you're ready.
Okay. Fifteen seconds.
So you can click to advance a slide or use the.
Go right click.
Right click will ban it off. Left click will.
Okay.
Want to get everybody sick. He's closer than me. Yeah. Going to crack that door. You can pass this around. Thank you. Kevin, directly to the second resolution.
Okay, thanks. So read this, read this or no?
No.
I think pretty good. Get what I wanted to get done today, but.
Okay, so what? All right, so we were in executive session. We came out of there and now we're going to reopen the regular meeting and we'll start with the potential officials who want to stand and join us, please.
The United States of America into the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
The first order of business every night is public comments. Do we have any public comments this evening? No public comments, we move on to number two on the, number three on the agenda, which is the acceptance of our minutes. First set of minutes, I move to accept and approve the meetings of the minutes of January 31st, 2017 as shown. Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have any discussion about the meeting minutes of January 31st? All those in favor of accepting the minutes? Second set of minutes, move to accept and approve the meeting minutes of February 7th, 2017 as shown. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the minutes of February 7th? All those in favor of accepting?
Press, all abstain. I haven't reviewed them. It's all abstained.
Okay, so three, three, two, one. Okay. Correspondence items. Move to accept and approve the correspondence items as shown, A through D. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any comments on the correspondence items? No comments on those? Are all those in favor of accepting the correspondence items? And, and the consent agenda, it's two items on the consent agenda, A and B. Move to accept and approve the consent items as shown, A and B, as shown on the, shown on the agenda. Second. No second?
Second.
Any comments on the two consent agenda items, the cemetery deed, another renewal of special permit for the Assabit Valley Lily Parade? No comments? All those in favor? Okay. We will open the public hearing on the approval of the CDBG grant application and community, community development strategy. So it's, it is a public hearing and it's resolved that the Board of Selectment approves the community development strategy as presented. And then further resolved that the Board of Selectment approves the CDBG application as presented and authorizes the chairman to sign that application, both of which would be decided at the conclusion of the presentation. Do we have a second? To those two resolutions?
Second.
Okay, so presentation is now part of the hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think we have a PowerPoint presentation coming up. Here we go. We are going to be talking this evening about two documents, as you've just mentioned, the community development application and the community development strategy. And before I begin, brief introduction, my name is Dan Cahill. I've had the pleasure of working with your staff here on these two items. I am a consultant working in southern New England on community and economic development. My associate is here tonight, Bill Scanlon. He also has quite a bit of experience in community development, particularly with this application, which is kind of complex, and his experience is in central Massachusetts. So, this is really a great opportunity, we believe, for the town to see federal funding come in and address two projects. The money comes from the Federal Department of Housing and Urban Development, which funnels it through the state. The application is to the state, DHCD. This project has been approved, excuse me, reviewed by the planning board and we have worked with your Economic Development Committee as well. So hopefully, we look for approval tonight to submit this early in March. The community development strategy, which I think you've seen, is a separate document from the application, but also part of it. And this document provides a platform for the community development application by letting the state know what's going on here in Maynard. And it also endorses certain sustainability principles, similar to the ones behind me that you folks have paid a lot of attention to over the years. And it sets priorities over an immediate timetable and then an intermediate timetable. So, the CDS really reviews things, as I mentioned, redevelopment programs in particular that are going on here in Maynard. And I have to say that you folks really are doing a very good job with everything that is happening. Credits, kudos to your staff and this regard, I think Bill's back here, Andrew and of course Kevin. Mill and Maine, you're familiar with all these projects, a tremendous potential impact here for the town. Your Business Environmental Enhancement Program, your BEAP program, able to funnel some funding back to the downtown. You're undertaking a downtown parking study, which is going to be very important for the basin parking lot we'll be talking about in a minute. You have a complete streets program that's going on that analyzes transportation locally in a different way, very inventive. And all of these projects and programs, you're able to leverage funding so that regional or in our case, the federal money is coming in to complement what's happening here in Maynard. You have a cultural district application that's being reviewed in final stages now that's going to further highlight things that are going on in downtown in the area, including art space. So these are a couple of examples that we think really make the town look good in the eyes of DHCD, who is reviewing this application. And it again, sets the platform for the different projects that we're going to be talking about to let the state know that you're thinking about a number of different things, not just the two funded projects. And the current priorities include Veterans Memorial Park and the basin parking lot in the community development strategy, which can lead very easily then to the, to the application. So this is an aerial view. CBA Landscape Architects, it did work on Veterans Memorial Park, put this together. You can see the park in the middle upper portion of the photograph. Mill and Maine is down in the lower left. I think it's the clock tower in this particular map. And then in the middle, we also see the basin parking lot. And of course, in the upper left of the screen is art space, which is a wonderful cultural addition to the town. And these two projects are going to provide a nice piece of continuity between that and the downtown area, as well as serving other purposes. Present condition of the basin parking lot, I'm sure all of you are familiar with this. You don't need to see pictures to know that it really just needs some work. We see weeds growing in the sidewalk, some trash there on the right. Of course, the walls containing the Veterans Memorial Park are there in the background. This just needs work. Look at that parking meter. It's been bumped at least a couple of times. Visually, there are some issues down there. And obviously, this is kind of a backdoor situation for downtown over the years. We have a number of these dumpsters. They're unsightly, probably a health issue perhaps. And you've seen some economic development growth that's come back down into the basin parking area. We just had a great meal at the Mexican Restaurant this evening in anticipation of the meeting here. And people are willing to invest, knowing that Maynard is a good place to be and they can be profitable. But it's tough to sit there, have dinner and look out over at the dumpster. So I think that the design work that we'll be talking about will address these issues to make it a tool, an asset for economic development rather than a deficit. Here's the street near La Court that leads down from Main Street to the basin parking lot. See the curb reveal here is crooked because of frost heaves. The, obviously, the sidewalk is cracked. It's pretty not only unsightly, but not very safe to walk on. The park itself has seen some issues over the years. Obviously, the lawn needs to be redone. I think that hedge may have been replaced. The memorial area is to the back. And of course, it's a focus for wonderful activity by veterans here in town. You have a couple of fantastic parades every year, Memorial Day and Veterans Day. And here they are, you know, a couple of feet down at the fire station. We've been working with Ed, who's the president of the Veterans Organization in town and American Legion, that may be him in the front.
It is.
He is, he's a great guy and he's glad to write a letter of support to the work that will be done at the park. There they are again. So, oops. We saw a picture of the fountain with the rusted interior basin and here's a really worn area in the northern part of the park, which will be the focus of the first phase of improvements at Veterans Memorial Park. It's really tough to navigate this, particularly if you have a disability. And a lot of the improvements will speak, as we'll see in a minute, to accessibility. It just, it looks poor, it doesn't really function very well, and these improvements will turn that around. You probably reviewed some of those before. So the community development application itself, again, will focus on the basin parking lot and the Veterans Memorial Park. And gentlemen, you're going to be competitive again with communities across the state to access this funding. Maynard deserves it as much as anybody else who've looked at this area. There are some lighting issues down here. Previously, the town has participated in this program, but it's been over 10 years. So this is going to mean that you can make improvements to the park and there will be design work done for the basin parking area. Now, I asked the boards, the patients in terms of some of these budget figures, they are approximate, we are still working on those. The design work has been completed and some of the assessment on this budget is taking place in terms of what the budget will look like. But it's an approximation that we're looking at a pretty good sum for a grant application for this community development block grant. And then local match coming hopefully for, from your CPA or other money that's been set aside for accessibility improvements. Once again, the improvements in this first phase are going to be on the Nation Street side. End of the park include landscaping, seating systems, a performance area, a curvilinear walkway system that will really look good and function very well, and new lighting. The accessibility features will include tables that can roll a wheelchair up to, a great ramp down from Nation Street to the basin parking lot, so people can get from that area down to the parking lot and onto the downtown solely needed. And I think you've seen some of these improvements in, in, in design form. Project's been underway for a while. I think, Bill, the, the community meetings occurred in the first quarter of last year where the design team reached out to the community and listened to input for people that use the park. This is what it looks like right now. And CBA, the landscape architectural firm, has done kind of a photograph of what it might look like. I think the seating might change a little bit. There is some discussion about that. These are a little different kind of seating, but we do see the performance area in the background. And I think there's a local symphony orchestra that had some input into this performance area design too. So it's, it's really going to be a nice change. The basin parking lot, which Bill's been working on, we've got your town engineer has helped us to estimate what the design work would cost to address all the issues that we were talking about earlier. And we are going to be able to use some nice leverage here in Maynard up to around 36,000. I'm going to hand out a budget, the number there is a little bit lower, but I think most of that will come from your BEAP program and improvements that you had planned anyway. But it says to the state, look, we're, we're doing this for economic development, we're paying attention to these issues and we're inviting you in to complement what's happening here in Maynard. And we're going to make it attractive and I think that they would like Maynard to participate in the program. So basically, that will be the community development application. The strategy is that document that is kind of the background. And it provides that platform. We're focusing on the basin and the park. We have included in the budget, as you'll see, a, an item to support your administrative staff burden to administer this grant. Many times, this grant money that comes to the town, but it gets to be more expensive than, than it's really worth. There's an overhead here that's going to be addressed in the application that we make. So.
Excuse me, we're just going to pass that piece of paper out to anybody that wants to take a look at it, because we have it electronically.
Okay.
And we have to provide it for everybody here.
So thank you, gentlemen. I was told to be 15 minutes or less. You got an important jammed meeting here. We're glad to pay proper attention to this, but glad to entertain any questions. And how am I doing here, Andrew?
Pretty good.
Good.
Is there anybody that has any questions that they'd like to have answered? Anybody in the public? Anybody on the board?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Go ahead.
I'll go first.
Yeah.
Hi, Bill Crenshaw, Mockingbird Lane. Last week at a Community Preservation Act hearing, we were told that the, this block grant money being used for the park, accessibility improvements in the park, could be used for other accessibility options around town. One thing that was mentioned was making the stands of the football field accessible. And yeah, that just got me thinking, I was just curious what, what other projects were on your shortlist when you narrowed it down to these two?
I know, I have, I don't know anything about what took place at the CPC meeting. I don't know, does anybody here have any knowledge of what took place at that meeting?
No, no, that's not my question. My question was, at our hearing, it was pointed out that these monies can be used for more than, you know, this particular project's an eligible project, but there's other eligible accessibility projects and, and they mentioned the stands of the football field as one. But, so I was just curious, you know, given that it's eligible money for lots of projects, what other projects did you consider before you narrowed down the list of these two?
Andrew can tell you that.
So, Mr. Chairman, to answer Mr. Crenshaw's question, this, the funding from the CDBG funds that is available and may be applied to this project was put in place after the Veterans Park project was developed and started looking for funding sources. We identified an accessibility issue that would be resolved by it and knew that we had community development block grant money that could be used for that purpose. So that, that money could be used for other purposes and we're not going to spend all of it that's available. But no one's come to the town with a plan to, for instance, make the high school stands accessible. So, you know, it wasn't considered in that sense. It was, it was considered because we were approached saying, is there money available for this project, which has already gone through all this vetting that you've brought about tonight? It didn't start with the money and then let's find a project.
Yeah. Many years ago, when my business was on Nation Street, we had a very active Chamber of Commerce, they donated substantial amount of money.
To build a parking lot that you referred to as the basin. And as time went on, I guess, all the restrictions got lost, rackets were not available for one reason or another, and then one of the local merchants, I guess the Commonwealth was holding some classes over the old co-op building, and they told the people that were coming to the classes to park in that parking lot. Well, he had one of these businesses that starts quite early in the morning and he objected to the fact that the students were parking over there and there was no live parking for him. And when we, when we put that money out originally, that parking lot was supposed to be open with no parking meters to have people that wanted to stay for a longer period of time to park there and leave spaces up on, the meeting spaces up on the street more accessible. So I'm wondering what you plan on doing about that, because nobody's been able to find the agreement that the Chamber made with the town at that time. But that's not unusual.
Well, I believe that the town is going to address those issues and subject with a separate downtown parking study that will then fit in with the kind of improvements that could be made, made in the basin parking area. And that study is due to begin, I think, over the next couple of three months.
Well, are you considering once again to take the parking meters out of that lot?
Well, I think.
To make it accessible for somebody.
Dan's role in this project has nothing to do with parking.
Okay. He says he's talking about a parking.
Parking study that town is engaging with MAPC on will begin in March. And we haven't drawn any conclusions about whether we're going to leave parking meters in or take them out or add more. We might put some down on powder mold.
No problem. When I, when we get to that point, hopefully, I'll still be viable if you get up here.
Andrew, can you confirm or clarify something for me? You said just a few minutes ago that this project, namely the Memorial Park project, wouldn't necessarily use up all of the funds that are coming to us with the CB, CDBG grant?
That already exist in, we have CDBG funds.
We have some already.
That's right.
Do you know how much we have right now?
Off the top of my head, no, but it's around $200,000. There's two buckets, some of it is restricted to use a certain way and some of it is less restricted or unrestricted.
Okay. So if we were, Bill, Bill raises a point that raises my ears, because I hear from a lot of people about the accessibility and the actual safety of the stands or whatever you want to call them over at the football field. Is that something we can start to explore?
Absolutely. And I don't know if the CDBG funds would be eligible for that project for other reasons. So for instance, using it on this project is because it's in this designated area that has, has, was conditioned years ago by DHCD. We've extended it out, it goes out to the far side of Main Street. So for instance, we could use it, we know we could use it for, say, sidewalk improvements, but only in those areas.
Okay.
So I would have to find out if that project is eligible.
This current application is limited to that square footage, if you want to put it that way. Whereas the other money that sits in a bucket already could be used for other projects that might exist elsewhere in the town.
The application is definitely restricted to the area that the application's addressing. The money that the town already has some control over.
Yep.
Some of it again is restricted, so it has to follow certain rules. Others is unrestricted. And we would have more liberty to use it in a general, more general way.
It might be helpful if, for our next meeting, just on a separate topic entirely, that we get a list of the monies that's in the other grant, what's restricted, what's not restricted, so that we can then begin possibly having a discussion on that particular topic.
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions about the block grants? Okay, so we already made the motion, seconded it, we've had the discussion. I'll re, I'll reread the, the motions and then we'll vote on them, one and then the other. The first one is resolved that the Board of Selectment approves the community development strategy as presented. It was seconded by Dave, Jason. And then, so any bits in favor of that resolution, please raise your hand. Anyone opposed? Nobody. And the second was resolved that the Board of Selectment approves the CDBG application as presented and authorizes the chairman to sign that said application. Again, that was seconded, there was discussion. All those in favor? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Have a good evening.
Thank you. Do you want this back? Do you want this back? Thanks. Okay.
Thank you.
It's that time of year again. So, we're going to... Yeah, and make a motion to close the public hearing on the CBG application.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Hearing is closed. Okay, this is the water and sewer rate discussion piece. This is not, this is... It's not part of the public hearing, but it is a discussion that's open to the public. And we welcome Toby Feder from Woodard and Curran.
Thank you for having me. You'll have the report that I prepared. So, obviously, this year, we're on a bit earlier of a schedule than we have been in prior years and that's basically to get the rate setting by the Board of Selectmen into better alignment with when, into better alignment with when we want the rates to be enforced. Several of the prior year's rate increases have been delayed substantially due to, in some cases, delayed votes, but in other cases, also, the requirement that the water rates and sewer rates be approved substantially before the first read that will inevitably bill into the first bill of each fiscal cycle. So, basically, we're doing it several months earlier so that come July 1, the recommended rates or whatever rates the Board of Selectmen decide to implement for fiscal 18 can be enforced as of July 1 and have full impact for the full fiscal cycle. So, beginning in January, actually, beginning in December, I guess, we started taking a look at preliminary budgets for the coming fiscal cycle. And there is some increase in direct budgets as well as indirect costs associated with providing the utilities. We went through, basically, the same rate setting exercise that we've used now for probably eight or nine years here and came up with a basically set of recommended rate increases. Basically, on the water side, recommendation for a 4.1% increase. And on the sewer side, a recommendation for a 4.6% increase. And those are above the recommended rates for fiscal 17, which I believe are now in effect, correct, Kevin?
Yes.
Yes. So, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you have or...
Questions? Anybody have questions?
Yeah, unless somebody wants to go first.
No, go ahead, David.
Part of your report, Toby, welcome, by the way. Good to see you again. Suggests that you were reviewing a five-year capital plan. Who gave you the five-year capital plan?
It was developed by the town. We make some assumptions about when that's about, when the money's going to be spent and how it's going to be financed. In this case, I believe we're financing most of this year's via debt, but I think around $60,000 in line items into direct budgets on each side.
Yeah, and I'm good with that. I'm fine. I guess my concern comes in is I don't recall, perhaps my colleagues on the board, I don't recall that we've seen the five-year capital plan for water and sewer. And it's tough. Have you presented that to us, Kevin? The actual five years? Have we seen, you know, we have this pipe to fix in four years and this pipe? I don't think I've seen that.
Well, some of it's been identified in the INI work, infiltration reports that were, you know, there's a backlog of work that needs to be done, which is why the board has, for the last two years, allocated $250,000 for sewer improvements. So, some of that was identified. The prior year capital plans that Toby were referencing, the board did see, and that was in relation to the tank coating and the tank power washing as well as a Mockingbird pump station upgrade that was prior, done in those prior years.
Do we have it on a spreadsheet like...
Yeah, it's accounted for in the CIP that we have.
As I say, I don't recall seeing, like we have with capital.
Yeah, it's just captured separate.
On the general budget side, we have a thing that we've seen. We talk about it. We say we're going to need a vehicle here, there, there.
Right.
And I think when we're preparing a rate setting, that we should have an idea as to what the magnitude of what is needed is so that we have an idea that the numbers that we're looking at.
Sure. So, as the capital plan actually impacts what rates end up being in effect, what you end up having to do is have to pay for the debt service on things that have been completed as well as any line item capital in that year's fiscal budget.
Yeah.
And so, the rates in this recommendation do that.
Yep. I guess I just would prefer to see them myself.
Sure. Okay.
We can go.
The second question that I have is, in your presentation or in your outline here, you talk about non-based revenue for the upcoming fiscal year.
Yep.
And you say that the indication that we're going to assume a similar level of non-rate based revenue generation.
Yep.
Yet, and this is where my, sort of, it's an inconsistency, Kevin, maybe you can chime in. When we had our budget hearing a couple of Saturdays ago, in the general budget side, we talked about an 8% increase in new growth. So, if we're going to have new growth, how can we not assume new fees? And shouldn't there be corresponding new fees with that assumption of new growth? And if that's the case, then wouldn't our rates go down?
So, I understand your point. I think the better way of handling that is as we see the growth materialize, we change the, because basically, the assumption for non-rate revenues is based on what we've seen traditionally, right? So, if we're using a multi-year average for that, I think that's a better way of accounting for it. That will drive that number up over time if we really do see growth. But the challenge with making big assumptions about the impact of new connection fees and such is that you can end up creating yourself a structural deficit if the development doesn't actually occur. Or if it's, you know, if the developer walks away and all of the expected revenues don't, you know, arise, you know, it can lead to real challenges. I mean, the classic case being Cobb County down in Georgia was very dependent upon connection fees to actually run their O and M costs. And when they had the, basically, the boom and the housing bust, they ran tens of million-dollar deficits for two or three years before they could actually get their rates up to where they were needed, right? Because they were subsidizing operations with connection fees. And so, I think making the assumption that we should assume aggressive non-rate revenues can lead to bad things happening. And so, my recommendation would be not to do that. We will account for a growth in fees as we see them actually realized, so to speak.
Okay. The other question I have is, I was reviewing last year's submission and comparing it somewhat to this year's submission. And under the topic of non-rate based revenue, in last year's submission, and I'm going to read this to you, and you can take the numbers and help me out and sort of help me find out where, what I'm missing. "Based upon recent year's assessment of fees and fines, the Maynard DPW requested Woodard and Curran assume a similar level of non-rate based revenue generation." Same language that's in there this year.
Yes.
Then it says, "For the past several years, these fees and other revenues have averaged approximately $40,000 for the water enterprise account and $65,000 for the sewer enterprise account." Then I look at this year's summary in the same section.
They're significantly higher. I see exactly what you're saying.
And it says, "For the past several years, these fees and other revenues have averaged approximately $100,000 for the water enterprise account and $150,000 for the sewer enterprise account." In one year, how did we get from $40,000 to $65,000 for an average over a number of years?
I will need to research that. So, I did not...
So, how then can we believe that the percentage that you're recommending to us is accurate and that we're not going to overcharge?
Well, as a matter of fact, the change in this assumption drives down the increase in rates. If we assume the 40 and the 65 of last year, your rate increases would be higher because you would need more rate revenue. So, from the standpoint of rates and overcharging, this is less conservative.
So, then, how do we know that last year, we didn't overcharge?
Well, because I can tell you, having looked at your revenue statements, you're going to run shortfalls this year.
I'm just concerned when I see inconsistencies like that based on historical averages.
I can certainly, I can research this and I'll get an answer to Kevin before the end of this week on exactly what the change was, so...
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else have any questions?
Yeah, Chris, I have a few. I don't know. Kevin, this might be for you, considering whatever numbers you provided to Toby. I just went back and looked at some of the FY18 budget numbers that you provided to me, and I'm seeing that it looks like both sewer and water underrun what is included in what Toby provided to us. Is this a, I'm just trying to figure out why, why are we ratcheting something down? Are we making some cuts between, I think you sent me something on the 20, I think the last, water and sewer enterprise expense summaries were from 124.
Yep.
And, for instance, I think the 20, in the sewer, it was $2,972,040, which is, it's ballpark to what we have in here, which is 2940942 versus, let's see, what was in here? The budget under the water enterprise was, what you provided, is 1,789,522 versus 1,819,495. So, it looks like we're $30,000 to $50,000 different. I'm just curious as to how we came about with that reduction.
Yeah, I'm not sure. He did the, the rate proposal is based on the latest...
Yeah, it was based off of a budget provided to me, I think, on the 9th of January.
Yeah.
So, if that's the case, did we go, we've gone up?
No.
It was the 9th of January. This is the 24th. Does it imply that we've gone up since then and that these need to be adjusted to account for an extra $30,000 to $50,000?
I'd have to go back and look at that. I don't know. Mike, do you know what the last...
.......................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................
Yeah, a week or two ago, so.
14th, yeah, we got them on the 14th.
I think it was the 14th. Right, there was an estimate maybe in, in the earlier budget, is what I would assume is the issue.
Okay.
Anything else, Jason?
No, go ahead, if you have anything.
Just so, uh, yeah, Toby, hey, doing, welcome back.
Thank you.
You know, obviously, we just voted in a change to the senior policy.
Yes.
So, um, when will we know exactly what the impact of that will be this year, based on the means testing? Kevin, have you guys discussed?
We have, yeah. We, we have, we, we took a pretty deep dive on that as part of last year's rate saying, and the fact of the matter is, the, the rates, and this is part of the reason why we expect a shortfall this year, is the rates recommended for last year, in addition to being delayed, assumed the elimination, or at least the return to the prior credit for, for elderly citizens. And so, in effect, there's a, I think it's about $160,000 delta on both sides included. That's not going to materialize, because that money will never be realized until July 1, when the new policies go into effect. And so, when we made this year's rate recommendation, since last year's assumed the elimination of the policy, we didn't have to make an, an additional adjustment. This year's adjustment is based purely on the increase in operating expenses that we would, that we need to fund, and we would expect your water and sewer consumption to be able to fund at different rate levels. If we were to have not, or if you were to have not made that adjustment within, I believe, the last week or so, our rate recommendation would have been different. It would have been, if you wanted to keep that senior discount, the water rates, we would have recommended probably up about 7, 7 and 1/2 percent, and the sewer rates probably up around 9 percent, maybe a little bit more. So, obviously, the rate recommendation, recommendation for fiscal 18 is significantly different since you made that change.
Thank you, I don't have any more questions, Chris, thanks.
So Kevin, we've got a couple of questions we need to get answered. I guess the question is, what, you know, what, what do we anticipate? The answer to those questions, meaning, so far as the effect on the rate, you know, if it, I mean. I, I think we answered, other than, I mean, David, we have the capital improvement plan that was, obviously wasn't presented, because that was a general fund discussion on the 13th, that wasn't an enterprise fund. You talking about the five-year? Yeah, if that's the question you're talking about. We've talked about that with Aaron on several occasions. That we have, that's, I can send you, um, we talk about this every year when we meet with Toby, as far as what, what big, you know, what projects are you planning, and that's all accounted for. This year, um, there's, you know, nothing of significance that we're doing any borrowing anticipation, um, you know, just routine, uh, continued improvements with some of the work, the backlog of work that's been identified in the STANTEC reports, hydrant replacement, valve replacement, standard maintenance stuff, but nothing of significant borrowing that we're anticipating. But that capital improvement plan is going to identify things that Woodard and Curran has identified, like additional water source stuff, which we've had Bob Chappell in presenting to us, which has a, you know, significant cost associated with it, and some other, but nothing in 18 that's going to affect the rates that are being proposed.
So I guess, Kevin, can I, can I ask a quick question? So, I guess, just for my own education, the standard, uh, standard improvements that we do annually, like hydrant replacement, valve replacement, are they included in the line item capital?
They are now.
They are now.
They have not been.
We've made that request last year, which is to start carrying.
So.
Some capital and some capital.
Yep, so last year, I started carrying, um, the ongoing engineering work, the I and I work, which was always dealt with, with retained earnings, um, you know, as we had retained earnings, then come, uh, the recommendation for town meeting, we would deal with the I and I, uh, $85,000 work, um, up until even now, even, uh, things like fire hydrants, uh, replacement valve replacements, those are all line item approvals at town meeting using, uh, but this year, we're now looking at, we've had the discussion about trying to carry some of that ongoing, uh, routine capital, uh, needs within the budget. So, we've carried for it in the water in the past, this is the first year that it's being some, it's, it's a, actual the same amount, 60,000, that's being carried in the sewer side to deal with, uh, those, uh, routine capital, uh, issues. So, yeah, I, I think, you know, one, we're not going to have any retained earnings to, to utilize for things like that, but also, you know, at that point, we'd be tapping into stabilization funds for anything that's not budgeted, uh, at least on the sewer side. So, yeah, we are starting to think about carrying capital in the budget itself.
Okay. Chris, can I ask one more question here?
Like, sure.
Toby, again, going back to last year's, uh, report, uh, under the stabilization funds, your comment in last year's report said that due to the healthy level of funds currently, meaning last year.
Yeah.
In the stabilization accounts, that, um, he said, Woodward and Curran recommends this line item no longer be carried within the water and sewer budget rates. That says the balances of these two funds are within the range that would be considered appropriate and available to fund deficits. And last year's numbers were 451,279 dollars.
Yep.
For water. Wastewater was 766,599, we know it went down about 250,000 as a result of the project down on Florida Road.
Right.
So my question for you is, what is the appropriate, well, I want to use the words that you use, uh, what are the, what is the range that would be considered appropriate? So why this year is it not appropriate?
Well, because you, you, as you just indicated, it went down a lot, and I mean, I'll be perfectly.
On the sewer side.
Right, on the sewer side, um, I'll be perfectly honest with you, I expect you to run significant shortfalls this year on revenues, which means you're going to have a negative free cash in all likelihood in, in both of your funds. Now, that's prognostication five months ahead of time, but based on, on how we've seen the revenue accrue year to date, and what we know about the structural shortfall that was associated with me making the assumption at the city, at the town's request, that the, that the senior discount, uh, was going to be modified to the old policy, but it not going away, we know that's another $160,000 impact we calculated, and we know the number of people who were applying for the credit, who didn't, didn't get it in the preceding years. So we know that that's $160,000 structural shortfall in, in this year's rates. So, uh, yeah, I, you know, when we have a fair impact on the stabilization on the sewer side, and when we have every expectation of having shortfalls this coming year, yeah, that does make me more conservative. I mean, you, what you don't want to do is run yourself into a corner where you only have a couple hundred thousand dollars on each side, and, and then be left at a point where you actually end up with basically a negative balance, because the DOR looks at that very unfavorably, in addition to being a inappropriate utility management strategy. Now, to your question of what's an appropriate level, um, generally speaking, the CPAs who I work with would say that at a minimum, you should have 10% of annual costs as an operating reserve, in addition to which you should have some allocation, um, associated with capital reserves. So if something big happens at a wastewater treatment plant, or something big happens at a well, you have an ability to actually fund it. So while there, there are no hard and fast industry standards, when we look at, at your level, I would recommend your capital reserve be somewhere around that 20% to 30% level of annual operating costs, which gives us a 30 to 40% of operating costs, and obviously, we're, we're lower than that now. We're in the 30 range in recent years, but with the big hit that we took last year with, with a couple of projects, and the fact that I expect you to run shortfalls this year, I do not expect you to be in that range at the end of this fiscal cycle, which, which gives me, it, just, just from a sort of prudent standpoint, it says, you know, we, we aren't in, we aren't in the profit-making business here, but we are in the smart operations for long-term fiscal sustainability business. And so, um, that, that's, those went into our recommendation for this year.
Okay, thank you.
Well, also, just to add, missed a quarter of 17's rate increase as well.
That's correct, and that's, that's a separate issue, but it's also one that has a revenue impact, especially on the sewer side, more so than the water, because we didn't have a water rate increase last year.
Okay, so 7:55, so we have to open a public hearing, and we'll just continue the same question, line of questions if we have to, um, into the public hearing. So the public hearing, we read the notice, and then consider the hearing open. The hearing reads, water and sewer rates legal notice. The Mainard Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, February 21st, 2017, at 7:55 PM in room 201 of the Mainard Town Building, for the purpose of amending the town water use bylaws, specifically water and sewer rates, the public is invited to attend for the Mainard Board of Selectmen. So the public hearing is now open. I have one question, that's, doesn't matter if it's the public or the previous portion. When we look at the increases, and maybe Aaron, you can, you might know the answer, Mike, when we start looking at, you know, potential increases, and we're talking about salary and expenses for both water and wastewater, when you start to look at those lines, and, you know, there's a total increase suggested, what, what percent of those suggested increases are contractual, whether it be on the labor side or the expense side? Because I know in, in, you know, in that particular part of our, you know, municipal works, there's a lot more contractual costing to, you know, the plants and, and the process. So when we get to the, the, um, the numbers that suggest from, from Woodard and Curran, 4.1 and 4.6, what percentage of those two numbers are contractual as opposed to what the rates are for today?
Okay, um, just on the water side, so when we went through and we budgeted for the water side this year, we added a contractual, uh, increase of $3,000, but overall was able to reduce, we, we hired summer help in the water department, we actually reduced that number down, so we decreased salaries by 1.25% of our operating budget for this fiscal year when we submitted a budget for these rates. And on the sewer side, uh, we had a increase of 28,000, uh, on the sewer side, we did have a new hire, full-time employee, that we accounted for, and that was a 16.8% increase on, of that budget, was just on the salary side. Operating expenses on the water side.
But before you get back to water, on the sewer side, the big increases, contractual increase related to wastewater treatment plant at 3%, Viola is a $850,000 contract, so any, any increase contractually there, and that's a, not a defined or definitive increase amount, because our contract is expiring. So we're anticipating we're going to be in that ballpark, but we don't have those numbers for certain yet, but on the wastewater side, which is part of the sewer budget, at least 3% of a significant contractual, private contractual, uh, operating, uh, contract is carried in that. In addition to on the sewer side, we've now added, as, as Jason had asked about, the $60,000 to the capital, which no longer was there, and we're, we're carrying for that additional employee on the water sewer side, the way that the funds are broken up, 60, 40%. So it just kind of depends on, you know, the relation of where that positions are funded, so, not to cut you off, but that's where a lot of the sewer side increase is coming from.
Okay.
Thank you, you have the actual number, we, we, so we budgeted a 5% increase, it was $44,000 for the anticipated contract increase for our wastewater treatment plant. On that note, also, we, we took a closer look at the utilities that were being spent, and we reduced the utility, uh, for heat in that building by $12,000 this year, trying to balance that out, uh, as much as we could. Operating expenses, some of the, the higher operating expenses of the larger increases, uh, we budgeted another $20,000 for repair and maintenance of equipment across water, that was a 66% increase, um, and.
Think the chemical expenses is, is another area that we've had to increase because of the chemical, uh, costs of chemicals on the water side for water operations, we've been running into a little bit of deficit, and we've seen increased costs associated with the, uh, chemicals to up, for the water treatment, uh, operation.
Yeah, so we, we added a budget in, uh, uh, you know, a budget of $80,000 for chemicals, broke that out from other expenses, reduced that line down a little bit, but trying to get an idea of just what we're focusing on chemicals. Also, um, so we've had, uh, we had the issues with the TTHMs last year, DEP's been, you know, paid quite a few of interest to the town administrator, so we have, uh, improved and more frequent sampling plan, uh, from the DEP that's mandated, um, so we, we spend over $25,000 a year now on just water quality sampling, so that's been broken out as an individual lineup, and we've funded that at $25,000 for the sewer side.
Yes, Mike?
You also have a similar problem in water and sewer.
The what?
A similar problem in water and sewer having to do with debt. The debt prior to indirect costs on water, it's 35% of your budget, and on the sewer side, it's 33%. It's much, that's a much higher number than it probably shouldn't be, whereas in this similar situation, in the general fund, where your debt percentage of your budget is, is unusual high too, so take that into consideration too, I mean, we have, we carry a third of your budget is debt.
Okay, thank you. When do we start losing some debt?
Probably about the same time that we, probably about four, five years.
20, 20.
We lost about 30,000 in the, in the sewer this year, but the, the water went up, which is a, by 50 grand, what, what?
It's the tank project.
1.2 million borrowing. Do we actually lose that other money? Which other? The budget cuts that we talked about in the fall?
The 9C cut on.
Oh, yeah.
No, that's for work that hasn't been done yet.
Yeah, that's something different.
Which.
We're gonna. So that's not, that's, that's nothing business. So we're gonna have to deal with that at town meeting, this, because we're not seeing that money released, so we are gonna have to fund that, because it's a. It's not reflected in, in this set of numbers, okay? All right, well, thank you.
So with regard to these rates here, and with regard to all things being equal, say nothing comes up on the horizon this year that we have to spend, you know, a minimum amount of money to actually, where are we projected to be next year at this time? Or the year after? Do we have any growth, any, any perspective? I know there's certain things you can't give us, but I mean, I'd like to have an idea of where we're going to be a year from now, because this is going to be our conversation again, and I don't want to make the assumption we can continuously be raising rates because of this and because of that, so I'd like to start projecting things out, similar to the, where you guys have a five-year capital plan, right? So, at what point do you guys share information about where you think you're going to land next year in FY19?
We've already started talking about that, you know, and I think this is a big effort, you know, this year to try to right-size, you know, the ship, and, and, you know, as we look at the revenue assumptions in, in the rate recommendation, um, I think this time next year we'll be in good shape, barring any, any unexpected thing. But to your other point, knowing what potentially could be coming down, um, you know, potentially tied with new growth and one-time fees, um, that may help us in the revenue side projection.
And plus, the, the increased consumption is also, you know, obviously, the amount of water you sell is the denominator on, on the equation, right? So the more water we sell, if we sell an extra percent every year going forward due to growth, that's 1% less of any rate increase that you need every year, if you see my point. The challenge has simply been that we haven't been seeing growth right now, and so if we truly expect to see it, and we have rationale for increasing the assumed sales, I'm willing to enter that into the model and take account for it. But when I look at the past five, six years here, we haven't been seeing growth, and so it would be, at least from my perspective.
Actually seen a drop-off, because.
Exactly.
The Stratus building, 111 powder mill, um, that's been closed up, that was, we saw a fairly significant, um, drop-off in, you know, selling, if you will, selling water as a business commodity, that it hasn't been there. That's part of, that was part of the TTHM issue.
Didn't all those people just move over to Mill and Main? And use, and they're using the same amount of water at Mill and Main that they would have been using at the other location?
No.
Why?
I don't know, operationally, that's where we've seen the revenue billing isn't, isn't the same. One, for instance, they're in 125,000, 150,000 square feet less space than what they were in, um, you know, they've downsized some of their employees, where they're operating in 100,000 square feet, um, I don't know operationally what's changed there, but that's where we saw the, the impact on the TTHMs.
Maybe they're limiting their toilet flushing?
Low-flow toilets, they'd actually make an impact, I'd like to outlaw them, to be honest.
You know, that's not the only driver, but, um, as you look at the numbers historically, we've seen, uh, you know, decline.
The reason I'm asking is because we made an unpopular decision to raise sewer rates last year. Clearly, they were needed, the numbers, we're looking to raise rates again this year, so at what point are we going to be able to definitively say, all things being equal, I don't anticipate new growth impact by the time we get around next year.
Right.
I don't think the projects that we have in flight are going to be of substance, that we're going to show a lot of, you know, revenue from water. So, I would love to see some numbers about where we think we're going to be in 19, and maybe some projected information on 20 as well.
Yeah, I think next year, if we, if we wanted to do a three-year projection, I think that's fairly easy to do, you know, it, you know, the, the only thing that comes into a multi-year projection is if we're going to be assuming impacts of growth as part of the projection, obviously, that's a fairly highly uncertain look into the future, so to speak.
I'd prefer to see it even without projected growth.
Okay.
Just to give us an idea of salary impact, what's coming next year, you know.
Capital impacts.
Things that are on the capital.
Absolutely, things that are on the capital program, we can certainly.
Hopefully, we'll have, you know, if we do an extension, but, you know, if we look at the Viola wastewater contract, that's kind of up in the air with that operation. If we lock in with a five-year agreement instead of a, a three, you get better rates, and operationally, uh, we can, we can look at, we'll have some more known costs. The other thing is, I mean, to be honest, we're talking now, it's February, we've never done this, we're talking April. So the, the, we're, when I say right-sizeing the ship, we've been dealing with, one, the board hadn't approved it two years ago till we lost two months of increases.
Two quarters, yeah.
Two quarters of increases, and some of that, uh, you know, that's why we're talking now in February, so we can account for the appropriate revenue that we should, we're expecting, and.
Let's assume we do a good job of making sure we vote things in at a responsible timeframe, that's all I'm asking, just some projections for next year.
Absolutely.
What are, what do you, what do you, what's the estimated impact of the brewery's water use? You know that? We have that, we had that number at one point. Yeah. We had that number to guess at one point. Yeah, we have the numbers, um, Aaron, uh, we did the calculations, so, they haven't started brewing yet. Yeah, I know that. But, uh, I, I don't know.
I don't have the monitoring, but we, we have the numbers.
Just a, just a. It'll be a little. It's just gonna be, it's gonna be a, a significant impact, I would think.
I guess.
You know, we have some other projects that, you know, we talk about, the powder mill road, um, project that there's, that we're going to be hearing about soon, um, might be an opportunity there to, you know, depending on what happens with that, some out-of-town sewer billing, which has a higher billing rate.
Yep.
For that, you know, for that project, a couple of other opportunities. Okay, um, anybody else have any questions, or anybody for us, or Toby, better? Okay.
Hi, Alana Augustus in Rio Road. I'm not sure I can articulate what I'm thinking exactly, but we were talking about, and you kind of made that off the cuff, like low-flow toilets, I wish they were outlawed. It seems like you're, you're talking about getting more money by using more water, but environmentally, people are trying to use less water, and we had a huge drought this year. Aren't we talking about sort of, um, the wrong behavior getting encouraged?
I was being facetious, my apologies.
I mean, I know that that was off the cuff, but it, it, more, more generally, you were talking about having increases, like, ooh, if we use more water, everybody spends a little less for the water, but generally speaking, big picture, that's not where we're going, we're trying to use less water, we're trying to be more, you know, responsible environmentally, so it seems like the wrong behavior is getting, um, uh.
Encouraged.
Encouraged, yes, thank you.
Encourage water conservation, but we are in the business of selling water. We have an expensive operation that needs to run.
Right, and it, absolutely. So, but is there a way that we can somehow fix that?
Well, you have two, you have two pieces, you have your fixed costs, which ours are huge, because we don't service that many folks, and you have your variable operating costs, which are how many gallons you move.
Right.
So, the, you know, if, if we say we're going to use, I don't know, how many gallons are we doing a year at this point?
390 million.
Yeah, 390 million, so you're looking at conservatively 380 million, plus or minus, that has to cover the 33% debt and 30.
That has to cover the thirty-three percent debt, and thirty, thirty-four percent debt and thirty-three percent debt. So, you know, you're not, and I think, Bill, I think we had this conversation years ago with, you know, you need to sell at least as much water as you're assuming you're going to sell to cover your fixed cost. And, and you, if you have a year like this year, where we didn't sell a lot of water, we're underrunning, versus if you have a year where everybody's flush with water. No pun intended. Surely, the unfortunate fact is, the only way to sort of get out of that income, or pardon me, revenue variability associated with rates, especially inclined block rates as you have here in town, on the water side at least, is to have much larger fixed charges, a monthly service charge. But of course, that then does not provide a pricing signal to encourage conservation, because you're deriving most of your revenue off of fixed charges. So a good example of that would be South Kingstown, Rhode Island, where they have all of these huge waterfront mansions that only have people in them for four weeks a year from, from New York City, and they had to upsize all of the water mains there to be able to fight fire. So on July one of every year, South Kingstown sends out bills that account for ninety-three cents on the dollar that they're going to bill that year in fixed charges just for being connected to the system. And so they have very low water rates, but very high fixed charges. Because as Jason correctly is, you know, points out, in the operation of a utility, your fixed charges, the amount you're going to spend is, is pretty well set. You know, whereas when you have the volumetric rates, obviously, your revenue can vary wildly depending on, depending on how wet the year is and how much water people conserve or don't conserve. So, you know, the flip side of that coin, of course, is in a very dry year, many water utilities make far more money than they need, because people are irrigating outside. But in very wet years, the converse is true.
It's, I think it's important too to highlight the regulatory requirements that are being, you know, put upon, you know, municipal water sewer districts. We didn't even talk about tonight, MS four, but, you know, the MS four permitting requirements that we're carrying in the sewer budget, which Jay Houston brought up, we haven't been before. But, you know, that's a conversation we've been having for the last few years, that's clearly driving up our costs with how we're gonna deal with, with the MS four permitting requirements and, you know, the mandates that, that the DEP is.
And in addition to which, exactly, DEP is also beginning to truly drive sixty-two gallon per cap a day limitation on limited basis, and what that is, is the amount of water that communities are actually allowed. It's not really a prescribed to sell more yet, but the state seems to be moving in the direction that they're gonna figure out some way to penalize communities that sell too much water. For example, Andover, Massachusetts, they sell well north of sixty-two gallon per cap a day, and that's because the people keep very large green lawns. And, but the state's on them over their water withdrawal permits, basically because they're saying, you're selling too much water, you need to drive conservation. So there is a regulatory stick to drive the conservation as well.
Okay.
I don't think that anybody would suggest that we're gonna reward bad behavior, but the question really comes from how much more revenue can we expect from a source like the brewery, a source like the additional people in the mill? And then when you get over to the development in one twenty-nine Parker, how many hookup fees we're gonna have, and then how much water are we gonna sell there? I know that, you know, the grocery store, if you go take the grocery store, they're gonna open, and compared to the Stop and Shop on sixty-two, it's gonna probably be a bigger store with, with much more to offer, but the water use and everything is gonna be significantly lower, because if you go to their store in Sutton, you'll see that it's a green store.
Right.
So you're gonna see savings in those ways. And I know that the people from, you know, the guys from Capital Group, whether people like them or not, they, their projects that they've been building lately are all, you know, built with green in mind.
Right.
So those type of things, you know, they're rewarded at a different level, you know, to developers and to businesses, they get those rewards not from us, they get those rewards from people who they don't even buy their water from when they can prove that, you know, we're a green store, we're this, we're that, and they get certain designations for their businesses that, you know, lower some of their costs. But, you know, so we're not, I wouldn't suggest that we were rewarding behavior that some people, you know, don't like, or.
No, not so much rewarding, but counting on a behavior that is not continuing at that level, because people are, because people are changing their behavior, that maybe there's gonna have to be some sort of happy medium between some sort of fee-based plus usage base down the line, because we, you can't count on people using the amount of water that you assume that may be used in nineteen eighty-five.
Yeah, the only challenge, or the, one of the challenges associated with, you know, large fixed fees, your monthly access, because generally speaking, you know, one of the arguments about water rates is, well, people who want to conserve can reduce their bill and manage their costs, and generally speaking, if you put in a fairly large fixed charge, the people who are hurt the most are your single seniors living alone, because of course, this is brand-new, they were never using much water anyway, and if we're gonna have an actual connection charge that goes on top of the water use, since they use very little water, they wouldn't see a large benefit from the reduced volumetric charges. They would just have a new monthly charge that applied to all folks who are connected to the system. And so those types of changes can sometimes be unpopular, putting in large fixed charges for those reasons.
But we do need to pay for our water sewer system.
You absolutely do, absolutely do.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Seeing on some, some community levels are starting now looking at the bylaws, which isn't always popular, especially for those that have wells, but they're implementing private wells as part of the restrictions now.
Yep.
That haven't historically never happened before. So if you have a private well and you love your green grass, there's communities now that have implemented or looking to add in restrictions that follow the same as the water system, you know, those that have a draw on, you know, communities that have wells and other things, so it's not popular.
Okay. Here, Bill.
Thanks. I have a question about revenue targets, but inspired by that last conversation, I have a suggestion for next year's go-around on, you know, considering the possibility of implementing the first step of a block rate for sewer charges. Because, for example, if you cut the first block in half to, you know, help the people who don't use much, but then, you know, add ten percent to all the rest of the block, you know, on average, that works out for the average user, they end up paying about the same. But the people who are, you know, using a little more than they should, you know, the price starts going up, and they got a little incentive to, you know, use the proper amount, so might be worth looking at. But my question is on the revenue targets, because I was looking at a memo that was in the packet, and, you know, it said, we need to set rates for fiscal eighteen?
It's fiscal eighteen, yeah.
Fiscal eighteen at, you know, water needs one point seven million. Last year for fiscal seventeen, you know, water needed one point six million, so yeah, the rate's gotta go up. But then I looked at the numbers for sewer, and it says, oh, fiscal eighteen, we need two point four million, or whatever. And the prior year, we needed the exact same amount. So if we needed the same amount of revenues for seventeen as we do for eighteen, why do we need to raise those sewer rates?
Okay, I'm gonna, I don't have the model open in front of me, but I mean, we are analyzing, I mean, and again, a big part of the assessment is, remember, there's a two-step. One is taking care of the numerator, which is how much we're gonna basically spend and need to raise, and the second is, how many of the, how many gallons are we gonna sell? And as Kevin correctly pointed out, your consumption, your billed consumption has been going down, and that's been more impactful on the sewer side from what we've been able to see. Now, there are some limitations in the billing software as to how well they can dice the data, that, to be honest, will make setting block rates and sewer charges difficult.
We're just talking about the direct.
But it's certainly something that we could take a look at. So the fact of the matter is, if you sell, let's say you sell four percent fewer gallons, you need a four percent rate increase, even if you don't spend any more money. And since we use it, we use a multi-year average for sales when we actually make the rate recommendations.
I mean, that's what I would thought when I first saw the sewer rates, it's like, okay, it's two eight this year and two seven nine last year, oh, usage must be going down. But then, why wasn't that impact showing up in the water rates? It just, one, went up in proportion to revenue targets, and the other.
Therein lies, therein lies probably, and there's probably a blend, number one, you probably didn't have as much demand constriction on the water side, and if some of your large users, because you have a steeply inclined block rate, you can sell, in one year, you can have a drop-off of a little bit, but if you don't have a big drop-off in tier four water sales, the revenue impact's actually quite small, because you have a pretty steeply inclined rate block. So if most of your, if you don't have a big drop-off in the sales of the high-cost gallons, and you do have some drop-off in the low-cost gallons, the, the actual revenue impact is not the same as on the waters or on the sewer side, where you have a flat rate, where basically you lose one gallon here, it's the same whether it's a low cost, or whether it's the first gallon or the last gallon, so to speak.
So you're saying that it might be that the little guys are using less and the big guys are using the same?
Could be.
Gotcha, okay.
Yes, Victor?
Yes. I have a question that is kind of funny to me. Every year we have in the enterprise, the sewer and water enterprise systems, we always have retained earnings. Now, if we're not taking the money in, where the hell are the retained earnings coming? Because that's supposed to be what money came in that we haven't spent. And if we're not spending it, why aren't we? Because we all know that we have a problem with many areas of transmission, both for sewer and water. So if you're talking a deficit, where the hell are the retained earnings coming? You have to earn it before you can keep it. We used to call it surplus.
So, correct, and you do have some retained earnings, and retained earnings rolls over on an accounting basis at the state level, so in some prior years? If you called five, six years ago, you used to make an annual hundred and thirty-five thousand dollar appropriation stabilization each year on each site, and we did away with that five years ago?
Yeah.
Probably? And for a couple of years there, we didn't need rate increases. You were, you had small, basically, you had small retained earnings each year that built to a level that allows you to basically absorb a negative retained earnings, like I expect you're going to have this year. So if you have a rolling retained earnings balance, if you don't appropriate it, right, in order for it to become not retained earnings, under DOR rules, Town Hall, or pardon me, Town Meeting needs to appropriate prior fiscal years retained earnings into a fund somewhere, or you're just allowed to let it roll.
Or use it for capital.
Exactly, or use it for capital, or do anything else, because you have used it that way in the past. But so you have retained earnings balances, doesn't mean they were all accrued in the prior fiscal cycle.
Well, that's fine, but you're talking about, about what, maybe three years of not getting the revenue in on primarily the water side, okay? And yet, you say it builds up, okay? But still, you had to have, somebody had to pay the rate for us to have retained earnings. So, and you're talking about we have a built-in deficit because our water rates are too low. And as the lady pointed out.
I didn't say that, so let me be precise in that one. I think you're going to run deficits this year, and it's not because your water rates are too low, it's because you are selling less water than we expected, right? So when we set water rates and we make a rate recommendation, obviously, we make an assumption about how much money we're gonna spend, and we make an assumption about how many gallons we're gonna sell, and that's how the rate calculation comes out. So if you sell too few gallons, and you did, you had a very high water sales two years ago, that was a big part of how you accrued some of that retained earnings, where you sold more water than was expected, this year, you're gonna sell less.
Yeah, but you know, I mean, you're in the business, so I'm just a lumpa here, I'm in the learning.
What do you call yourself?
But the problem is, okay, if, as the lady says, you advocate water conservation. Now, every time you put in a water conservation measure, you know as an engineer, or what the hell whatever your title is, that your rate, your revenue is gonna go down.
Yes.
But your maintenance costs and the stuff tied up with it, your labor costs, I mean, what you pump out of the wells and so forth, that doesn't decrease. And as your town administrator gives that, it seems all the chemicals keep increasing, and then the good old Commonwealth and the EPA always figure another way to put another rule on, and they don't give us any money for it, but it costs the municipality a lot of money.
Absolutely.
So if we, if we roll over this so-called retained earnings, why the hell aren't we using it to either keep the rate down, or at least improve the system?
Sure. So there's actually a good reason.
How much money do you need in a retained earnings fund to consider it a safe deal?
You want enough to cover a potential shortfall, and there's a good reason. So under DOR rules, and this is state of mass who oversees your budgets, if you underrun, let's say, let's say we, we have a shortfall in retained earnings, negative retained earnings at the end of a fiscal cycle of, say, a hundred thousand dollars in water and a hundred thousand dollars in sewer, what the DOR will require you to do and prove that it's gonna work in the next fiscal cycle, is not just adjust your rates for an additional hundred thousand dollars, they want you to pay the hundred thousand dollars you just lost back. And so you end up having to double any shortfall in the following fiscal cycle. So from a rate stability standpoint, and this is, that requirement is hard on towns and it is on cities, because you guys have the limited ability of town meetings to actually appropriate from stabilization and such. And so, you know, it's, it's just trying to actually give you guys enough flexibility that you don't end up having a fiscal crisis, because, I mean, the truth of the matter is, in any given fiscal cycle, you don't know where you're going to end until your final bills go out, which is what, May one, or pardon me, April one?
June.
Okay, June, so.
Two bills next year.
April.
It is April, I'm pretty sure, because you're.
First of all, for, Bill, yeah.
Right.
Bottoms of March.
So, but you don't have any idea of where you're gonna land fiscally until your last quarter bill's gone out. So there's, it's trying to plan appropriately for the uncertainty that's associated with these, in light of the DOR accounting rules you have to comply with.
But theoretically, sir, when we went into the enterprise system, as I understand it, the enterprise system is to produce revenue to keep itself solvent. We're not supposed to, as far as I know, appropriate money to the enterprise systems, okay?
Towns are allowed to appropriate to the enterprise funds themselves, enterprise funds are not allowed to subsidize the general fund, under state law.
Okay, in other words, they might, what happened? Did they change the rule? Because when we all bought into this system, okay, the deal was, oh, boy, now you freed the budget, because these two entities are gonna produce enough revenue to support themselves.
Right.
Now you're saying that the state says you can appropriate money into the system, and that's not, that's not what I read in the general law unless they've amended.
I can't speak to the amendment, I know that the.
I'm not talking about the amendment, I said, I don't even know whether they've amended it, but what you're telling me now is different than what we were sold originally.
Well, I can't speak to that. The enterprise fund rules are not a legal structure, they're an accounting tool for communities to use. There's no legal definite, or legal separation per se, but the city, or what the state says is, when you adopt enterprise funds, basically, the town, you know, so for example, if Mayor wanted to pay for half the cost of water and half the cost of sewer, offer the town general fund, they would be allowed to do that. What you're not allowed to do is have really high water and sewer rates, so that you pay into the town general fund, that would be subsidizing the general fund. That's the script, that's sort of the prescribed boundary, it's a one-way mechanism.
Well, at one, at one time, as I understand it, okay, the Department of Revenue.
But that's, that's a justified methodology, the DOR accepts and approves, and they've seen, they've looked at ours three times, so.
As I understand it, at one time, the Department of Revenue would only allow an enterprise fund or a water district, okay, or just a regular water department, could only have so much what we now call retained earnings. And once, once it reached a certain level, in fact, I can cite you a case, but I won't, where they actually ordered the water district to either expand the district or lower the rates, okay, because they had so much. At that time, it was called surplus.
Was that under the Water Authority, per se?
Right. Well, we have several towns around here that don't have, it is a water supply, they have a city, they're a separate entity.
Right, and those are treated separately or differently by the state.
They don't, they have their own town meetings and a whole nine yards.
Yeah, they have an oversight board and all of that, you know, they're established authorities along the lines of like a Upper Blackstone or a wastewater site from Worcester, or a GLSD, Greater Orange Cemetery District, where they're established as an entity under state law. They are treated differently than this. They are treated differently than this, we've told you, sorry.
Thank you.
No bother.
Haven't got all the answers, but thank you.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. James.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Yes. Good evening. Nathan Ulrich, 12 Old Marlboro. Is there been any consideration or is there any ability to utilize surge pricing on higher demand periods of time or when there are droughts in effect?
They're allowed, yeah. We, we haven't done an assessment, formated on that. Again, surge pricing and, and some of the other sort of more esoteric ways of pricing, I think are generally used by larger utilities. You know, what, a big part of what we're looking for in a smaller community is simply stability of revenue is what we're targeting. Obviously, when we have a drought situation where we have mandatory cutbacks, that has a real impact on revenues. But, but we have not considered going to a surge pricing methodology here. I believe we would actually need a bylaw change in order to do that.
Yeah.
So that's not something we've looked at.
Certainly makes sense. And just remember, from the conversation prior, the talk of whether progressive or retro, progressive versus regressive fee on, on those people who can't afford a particular fee increase, whereas a surge pricing would allow for more of a progressive. If you need this more than anybody else, you would be more willing to obviously pay for that particular use.
Right. What I would say is, you know, in addition to what we just discussed about being large utilities, the only other place where you really see them here in the east, where we generally have plenty of water compared to other portions of the nation, is in locations where utilities are trying to forestall major capital investments. So let's say we, we have a 10 million gallon a day water treatment plant, and we are just doing our best to not go up to 11 million gallons a day of usage in the summer due to irrigation demand, right? That would be where you're trying to send a strong price signal to encourage the behavior we're trying to encourage. But yeah, as I said, they're, they're not terribly common east of the Mississippi, those types of pricing models.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have any comments on the board? Anybody else have any questions, comments?
One question.
Okay.
You said that one of the downsides to having a DVA system was that it kind of penalized, like, single-person households. Have you ever thought about, like, the tiered structure penalizing people that have more people living with them? Some people can't avoid being in the top tier.
Absolutely. That was, that very discussion, I, I think it was last year, I was asked for my opinion on, on whether I felt that the, the expanded senior discount policy was fair. And my, my general feeling about discount policies is they should be means tested, because otherwise, whenever you provide a subsidy to one customer, you're just shifting costs to others. And I didn't feel that it was fair for young families to be subsidizing water use of just a theoretical 65-year-old millionaire. Does not make sense to me. So that, that came up last year. But yes, we do discuss the impact, or we consider it when, when we look at this, the impact of these steeply inclined rate block structures on large families. And it comes up regularly here because the state actually, as a policy, the state recommends these inclined block rate structures without actually, I think, having ever taken that piece of, of the reality of how they actually get expressed in water bills, taking that into account. You know, your, your community or your family, let's say, lives in Boston and has five children, is subsidizing everybody else in the system. And although, actually, I'm not, yeah, Boston has a pretty steeply inclined structure. And I don't know that that's fair, but there is no, no industry standard on, on how to, how to set these things appropriately, other than through means test, you know, means-tested methods.
Have they, have they seen it work? Or do you know?
Seen what, in what respect?
Having the increase, I don't know how long, having the tiered system has been around in Maynard, but did that promote saving water?
Since I've been, at least seven, eight years, when the tiered structure was here when I...
2003.
2003?
Yeah, before me.
Say before me.
Do you know if usage decreased as a result?
Use has decreased over time. I can't speak to what portion of the decrease is associated with the change in the customer base versus actual...
Because we're getting more efficient toilets and all that.
Exactly. The price signal that you actually are sending to people.
Well, so, but we also have a, you know, for the last five years, we've had some sort of water ban at some point, you know? So we're, we're still, that's still a factor.
Yep.
The DEP, the annual DEP seasonal ban.
Yes.
Yeah, part of our permanent requirement.
Did I, any to cut you off?
No, no, by all means.
Okay. Does that answer your question? Okay. So does anybody else have any comments? Okay. So, does anybody have any suggestions other than the rates that are sitting here in front of us? Because there's a motion, we'll make the motion to move in, move to accept and approve the water and sewer rates as shown. There was a second.
A second.
Second by Mr. Donovan. So, any further discussion on that item? All those in favor? Thank you. I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Aye, aye, aye. Okay.
Thank you, Paul.
My pleasure, David.
Thank you, sir. My word, Harry.
Okay. Okay, the next item is the snow and ice budget, which is a deficit spending notification. Kevin, you want to...
Yeah, it's just a notification that unfortunately is not, you folks are, have not seen this the last several years. But, so just real quick, one, one change that has occurred in the update with the Municipal Modernization Act that took place in November of last year of 2016, was a change that notice only be given to the board. The board no longer approves it. It's under my discretion to approve the deficit spending. So, no change to the fact that deficit spending in the snow and ice budget is, is allowed by Department of Revenue and Standards, but the, I think the historic is kind of, when the Municipal Modernization Act tried to modernize many, many statutes that were on the books, one of the initiatives was with regards to deficit spending approval for snow and ice budgets. So the only requirement is that at some future meeting, the Board of Selectment or Councils are made aware that we are deficit spending. So I'm not looking for your authorization, I've already authorized it. The approval for, to request has been approved by myself to run a deficit in the snow and ice account in FY17, as we've seen historically, at least for the last few years. So, at the date of this letter, which you received on February 8th, we were running over a deficit of a little over 3,000. That didn't include the big storm that we had February 8th and the preceding day's cleanup. As of yesterday, we are now 70,130 over, so that's as of February 20th. That was still several contractor invoices that were playing catch-up, as well as the, the February 8th storm timeframe that, that wasn't accounted for. So, as of now, it's kind of where we are, barring, payroll's obviously has been met, but barring any other invoices that are lapsed behind that we haven't received yet, that's where we stand today, so.
I'm sorry, did you say seven zero?
Seventy, yes.
Correct.
One, one big initiative that we did differently this year was the, Aaron, from a financial standpoint, reassessed how we deal with the downtown snow removal. And, you know, historically, we contracted out a significant portion of that, and he looked at the man-hours and the ability to be able to save some costs, and we, we did it over the course of a couple of evenings throughout the night, using our in-house guys and renting some equipment. So that did save us a significant amount of money, but, you know, we have had enough nuisance, either ice weather conditions or full storms that...
While we're on the topic, Kevin, I've spoken to Aaron privately on this, but I think publicly I should thank him and the DPW for the efforts that they made over the last several storms that we've had. And those of us who drive out of town have seen the significant difference between Maynard's main roads and other communities' main roads, and that's testament to Aaron's leadership and the guys that work hard 24 hours, 24/7 to get the roads clear. Thank them all.
Every day coming and out, through Snow, Stowe and Bolton, I don't know, I think they still have shovels.
Alan, you can't come, you can't come through.
Rusty one.
You can really come up off 85.
117 is tough.
62.
Aaron, you add to something, say?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, can I just make one up?
Yep.
Just one coming through, it turns the subway face from 70 came out in town. Yeah, it was, that's how the cost of a single storm, so since that last, I think, when the first memo went out, 30 versus the 70, we also got quite a number of seats for our salt. So we spent this year $86,000 untreated salt, and I think that was the biggest...
Yes.
It wasn't, yeah, it wasn't $70,000 on one storm, but we got...
This is on my eye. If I imply that that was to...
Are we going to go with molasses? Have you seen that?
I haven't.
There's a, there's a couple of towns on the South Shore, they're actually spraying molasses into the salt, and they say it's a natural, a natural melting agent.
Sure it smells bad.
And it makes it stick around longer.
Yes. It's nasty, it's a mess, though.
I think Stowe tried that.
Yeah.
And we'll be talking to Beantown.
I don't even know if Stowe's tried anything driving through there every morning.
One of the big things, you know, is the, is the pre-treatment process, too, that we do. Pre-treating the roads buys these guys, you know, a few more hours, and it deals with, you know, even with, even incidents where, you know, we're expecting an inch or two, where these guys don't actually have to plow snow. But yeah, if, I didn't mean to imply that, that that increase was from one storm, that was a catch-up.
I was waiting for that storm. I was like, holy smokes, yeah.
That was a catch-up of invoices from prior, but...
Hey, quick, quick comment.
Boston spends that in an hour.
Yeah. We're on snow and ice. New sidewalks in town, which we're all thankful for, can someone get a message to some of the property owners, like 124 Acton Street, that they can't plow in sidewalks? I, I'm not sure if they know that Acton Street has a sidewalk going up and down the street now. They're actually plowing the snow and blocking off access to the actual sidewalk in front of the building. Kind of defeats the purpose. As well as the owners of the Marble Farms Development?
That's the crime lab.
Yeah. So the crime lab is well up there, so...
Yeah, we can, we can discuss.
I'll forget to put it in my notes later, so we can get on that.
We've got a few, we've got a few residents' call complaints on one of the different properties in town. Powder Mill Road is always one of them. And, you know, if residents can call in, we'll go up to Senator Row there, and we'll either get in contact with the owner and have them move it, or we'll move it ourselves and put an entry and location for them, so.
Well, they have a snow removal service, they're out there all hours of the night doing it, that's for sure. It's just that unfortunately, they just...
It's an easy thing for them to do.
Yeah. One ton in a nap is the same way. That's homeowners association group or condo association, they maintain it themselves. But they have done a nice job, the residents of maintaining...
At least on a couple houses on the street, yeah, they did a really good job, I have to say.
Noticed it up until...
Gray House and her White House, particularly.
Sidewalk to nowhere. That's it. It was just an official notice of where we stand as of today. Of course, that will determine, as we kind of unfold the next several weeks, impacts to available free cash for projects that we, that we look at spending for the spring, but we'll get there.
No snow.
I think we can get away with $70,000 for snow removal and ice that we'd be like, a-okay.
Too good to be true when it's $3,400.
It's, you know, February 21st.
It's true.
We've got a long way to go.
It's less what, it's, yeah, 8% of what it was in '15 at this time.
Aaron, real quick, have we ever made any progress on, I know we've tried this a few times, have we ever made any progress on trying to recruit, trying to buy salt with other communities to help bring the cost down?
Consortium?
Yeah.
So we're part of, it's the, I want to say it's Northeast Riverback Regional Chemical Consortium, that we're part of for our water treatment. We purchase all the chemicals through that consortium. And a question has come up from that group at actually the last meeting that we went to in early January, about purchasing other types of chemicals, right? And treated salt was one of the ones. And the way that they felt was that it was not an appropriate commodity for that consortium to try to, try to purchase. They, they want to focus on just on, on, on the chemicals themselves. We haven't re, I have not reached out to any of the surrounding communities to see if they are interested in that, but that's definitely something we can kind of reach out for. Different towns, they all have different techniques. Like, if you go to the town of Stowe, they're still using sand and salt mixture. We've gotten away from that. So that's something that we'd have to kind of reach out.
Well, they're, they're not an MS4 community, are they?
I don't know if they are.
No.
I don't think they are, which is why they can get away with that.
I don't have, yeah.
Yeah, salt, yeah, sand, and we went to, we sent out all the, all the DPW employees went to a kind of winter storm preparedness and response training hosted by the UMass Transportation Center in Bay State Rose in October. And one of the, they talked about different techniques, pre-treatment and whatnot, and they said that sand is, is going away, it's no longer, you know, go-to for committees. They're all recommended treated salt or some type of a salt rhino liquid chemical.
Okay. Yeah, something to think about. I know we've tried, we've tried a few times, and I know they couldn't get a, you know, I have talked to Kevin.
Yeah.
Haven't been able to get traction with some of our neighbors to...
We tried to go as far down, actually as south as Franklin, who was interested in, in accepting us as part of it. And Chris Okafor at the time had some conversations with them, and it didn't pan out. You know, it's, you have some buying power, right? But it's somewhat of a monopoly. I mean, Morton is the only one really that you ever see bid on everything. You know, we do our annual bids, and, you know, Morton's always the solo bid, and it's common for pretty much all the communities throughout the state. So they kind of, you know, they don't, they don't, they, we need them more than they need us type of position, so it's, it's been more difficult to kind of consortium buy based on bulk. You know, especially the volume that, that we as just Maynard gets. But we'll continue to explore it and look at some of those options. Jumping into FY18 budget?
Yeah, let's do that.
That was just put in there as a placeholder conversation after the, the budget, joint budget meeting on the 13th. There's no additional information at this time as far as beyond what the board has recommended for budget and revenue projections. I will say, as the board is aware, we, we have made ground with the Insurance Advisory Committee and the union collective bargaining agreement, unions of 11 that all have signed off, agreed to the employee plan design changes. And we have notified Meyer of that, and I anticipate, as I've said before, early March to have what that looks like. One, our no-change rate setting, which, you know, I'm anticipating as high as 15.3, it's currently budgeted for 10%, as well as what that will look like in, hopefully, which will amount to potential savings of several percent. And so until we have that number, we're not anticipating any adjustment to the budget, not anticipating any available revenue to increase anywhere else at this point. I would suspect by our next meeting, I'll have that information and we can have some discussions if there, you know, whatever that amount may be, if there's available revenue that is determined, how you, you guys want to allocate it. But we're not there yet, and I'm hopeful, obviously, the more the better, but I still, a lot of it's going to depend on the Maya unchanged plan rate. So if we're due, you know, 12, 13, 14, 15%, and we've only budgeted for 10, it's going to have another impact regardless of how much we save. So there's a lot, lot in the air right now, kind of, especially with regards to, you know, the health insurance piece.
Even in the best-case scenario, what's the magnitude of the impact? You think it would be $100,000, $10,000, $5,000? Like, if, say, everything came out, perfect world scenario, Maya comes in at the lowest rate we possibly can get, we get a...
Yeah.
What would be the difference? What would be the budgetary impact?
It may be that high. It may be $100,000, that high or more. But again, we have to share a portion of that back to the employees over the three year. I mean, it's still a huge win for us because that rate will, you know, will carry forward year to year.
Not a 15.3% increase.[1795.33]
It's, it's significant.
And the difference, the difference then can fill some gaps in the budget.
Can fill some gaps, but also we need to factor in the, the delta of whatever, call it $100,000 for simple math, that holiday share that the, the unions agreed to in order to make the plan design changes. So, I don't know what that's going to end up looking like. I, I am expecting optimistically that we'll see some money. You know, obviously, it'll be more. And then when we factor in what has to be paid back, that needs to be maintained within the budget. So, it's tough to say, Dave, because that number, you know, like I said, the, you know, the average, I, I think they had, the average is around nine or something with a ceiling at 15.3. So, if they put us at 14, 13, you know, it could definitely impact, you know, it would still get us below the 10. But it would impact how much of that savings is realized from the plan design changes. But either way, it'll be, it'll, you know, definitely be a win for us in the sense of costs moving forward.
As well as a very fair plan for the town employees, I must add.
Yeah, yeah.
Instance by 11 unions.
Right.
Voting for it. Which before we started this, there was quite a bit of, you know, conjecture on what was going right. So, good job on.
Agreed, yeah.
Consistency.
Yep. Thank you. And so, aside from that, I don't know if, you know, if the board had any kind of follow-up questions that, that came to mind after the joint budget meeting or if, if kind of answered those. But that's really why it's on there. I think we'll have further dialogue, as I said, as we hopefully see some additional revenue at our next meeting that we can talk about where it goes and what we want to do with it. So.
I do know I got hit with some emails and some, you know, some reach out from some parents who were concerned about another year of, in their words, the town perhaps shorting the schools. And.
Yeah.
So, I was, you know, prepared for that. But I also was not prepared for getting other folks actually reaching out to us who had watched the meeting and actually were very supportive of us trying to do a better job with taking care of every department as well. So, I mean, you know, when you, when you have kids in the school system, sometimes your only focus is the school system and you, you, you may hear some things that may not actually be 100% accurate, right, as to how the budget allocation really works and stuff. So, I, I think a lot more people have paid attention this year, since it's by the contacts I've had. I'm not sure if you guys on the board think the same way.
Agreed.
But I, I would like to commend the school committee as well and superintendent for actually being a lot more open this year from my point of view and understanding the constraints that you and your department heads are under as well for funding the rest of the town's budget, too, so.
Yeah, I think the joint meeting we had prior to, you know, the, the actual joint budget meeting was, was a good meeting. And I think that we made a lot of, covered a lot of ground there and expectations and.
It may make sense to have them in again before they get into their detailed, I mean, if they're going to be talking about cuts and all this other stuff, to have them in so that we have a full understanding of where they're going, what their thought process is.
Yeah. I mean, the articles are due by the 31st of March, so, you know, we're, we're really only talking two more meetings.
Two more meetings.
Before, before, you know, I prepare the budget article and we're accepting and putting it on the warrant. There's not a lot of dialogue, you know, really the month, the month of March and really only, we, we hopefully will know by our next meeting and really only that meeting and the next before you guys say, let's, let's go in this direction or not. But certainly, we could have, have them at another meeting. At that point, it's going to be set and they'll know exactly what they're getting. But I wouldn't, I would.
Yeah, it's, it's, timing isn't good.
It's tough timing, yeah. I would recommend that they start planning now that the budget that they.
That they were presented with.
Were presented with is the budget. Anything beyond that would be, you know, nice.
That being said, you're anticipating another article from them, you know, article outside of the budget.
I'm not. I'm not. I haven't heard anything. I'm not aware of anything.
I'm not aware of anything, you know, I'm just asking.
We should, we should ask, you know, just because if, like we talked about before, is, is important things there.
It has happened before.
Yeah, we have to be on the same page.
But, you know, I just, I know that, I know that I've seen a couple emails about, they've been to the CPC meeting since then and they've, they've had a list for those folks of things they want to see happen. I think they did approve that the CPC, some additional funding or the CPC-related article.
Yeah, I know we kind of headed off the annual letter that makes up the gap a couple years ago and I'm just wondering if there's not something that's going to be forthcoming this year to try and head up that gap again without, you know.
They might warrant, Chris John has set up a leadership team meeting, you know, with the four of us.
That's fine with me.
Just to kind of have that conversation and that they know and what their plans are.
Anytime after the end of this week is fine.
We can always bring that back to the full board. This is school vacation.
Certainly, if they want to bring the full board here again, that's not, you know, no objection. Or if they want us to go to one of their meetings, maybe.
Yep.
Do we know, are they meeting this week? I see it's in the calendar, but with this being a vacation week.
Yeah, I don't know. I actually don't know if they have a meeting scheduled, so.
All right, is that it for the budget?
Yeah, unless there's any other questions.
No, I don't have any questions. Anybody else have any questions regarding the budget?
Justin's away. I doubt that he has.
And you guys do have the full line item budget for the enterprise funds as well as the general fund now, so. That's it.
Okay.
For that. TA report you have.
Yeah, I'm going to, I started taking my medicine, eating healthy. I started doing all the things you suggested and I have the flu, so where are you coming? How do you help?
That was the staff update.
But thank you.
That was, that was the.
Oh, that was to the staff?
Staff update.
I gotta get another job.
Not on the health insurance.
All right.
That's not in the TA report. One thing I just, that's not in the TA report, if I could just have a quick second, is I mentioned earlier, we'll probably be looking to have a future meeting about, I know some of you have already heard about it, the 111, not 111, the Powder Mill Road Acton line, the parcel that is a split parcel on the Acton, Maynard line. We'll anticipate probably having a meeting, one or two selectmen, if they're available during the day, to attend that as well in future discussions. The, there's a proposed project.
Not where the, where the ATM is?
No, further, from Wendy's.
From Wendy's.
Right on the town line.
It's actually the Wendy's line, you can see.
The warehouse in the back?
Yeah, exactly. The warehouse. So, there's, that property's been bought as well as some agreements on some private residences there. And they're looking at a housing project related to, probably would be, you know, would be a 40B project under the lip that would involve units in Acton, the majority of them, because that's where the majority of the, the land is as well as units in Maynard. And we're still preliminarily having that conversation in what that, the big, you know, the impact on, one is what, what can Maynard get out of it as far as our SHI? And then also, you know, water sewer conversation is a, is a big, a big conversation, but.
So, there's four buildings there. Three or four, three buildings in a shell.
Yeah.
Like, it can't be, are they, does he own all? Did the same guy buy all, all the others?
Yeah. Everything, everything up in that parcel, not inclusive of the, the beer and wine store. That's a separate parcel. That's also been sold.
Yeah, that's, that's, they're going to put papaya by that.
Yeah.
They're going to put a showroom in there.
Yeah, that's.
They talked to the guy, they were bidding against the guy that owns the Chinese restaurant in Sudbury.
Oh.
And what's that, what's that place called?
Lotus Spice.
No, not Lotus Spice. I mean, it's the other one on 20 Ray Pay Shaws.
Lavender.
Lavender.
Lavender. The gentleman from Lavender told me that.
Same company.
He tried to get into it. Yeah, well.
Incidentally, two of those properties are affected by the recent bylaw change relative to historic.
Yeah, the historical. Yep. Are there two or one?
Two.
Okay.
Two of those properties?
Yeah, the residential, the residential properties.
Oh, because the one in back is, is, should have gone for that, but the owner didn't.
Do they have a preliminary plan or anything, or?
Yeah.
Can we, is that?
Is that the purpose of the meeting?
Yeah.
When is that? When do you want us to go?
No, it hasn't been set yet.
No.
We're waiting. So, we're working, we have our own consultant that also works with Acton and several others that deal with the housing projects and they're kind of organizing that meeting. They'll undoubtedly have to present to the board of selectmen as a whole, but, you know, what we're looking at is a next, kind of a next step meeting with inviting more individuals to the, to that conversation.
Okay.
So. I think, you know, Maynard, I think currently on the preliminary that they're looking at is somewhere between 42 and 50 units and the other 200 or so, 200, I think, to Acton, the way they have it currently laid out. But we would get 100% of the SHI piece of it, but that's forthcoming.
But the water sewer hookup would be through us, or?
So, that's still being discussed. I've expressed very cautiously and expressed our concerns on, you know, Acton getting the majority of, you know, all the SHI credit and the revenue that comes with that. And, and Maynard would be responsible for taking the waste. So, we've had that discussion. Very likely, they definitely are interested, the easiest thing for them is Maynard water and sewer. They're definitely going to be interested in the sewer side because they'd have to cross the river to get it to Acton. So, the water piece of it, water is, is a different thing. They have to involve the district in Acton, which is a separate entity. So, that conversation, which, that I think would be feasible. I think the water service would be feasible for Acton to provide that to the Acton folks. The sewer, it's probably cost prohibitive to, to even think about doing it through Acton. But I don't, I don't know that.
No, probably not.
You said 40B, so you're talking about owner-occupied units?
No, they'd be rental.
Low income.
It'd be a portion of those.
Affordable.
A portion of them would be affordable.
Significant difference. There's a significant difference.
PC boys, be PC now.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, yeah. 25% affordable, we get 100, we get 100% of all the, you know, of the units.
Now, the SHI, have we done the research? If, if 200 units are in Acton and 50 units are in Maynard, Maynard gets credit for whatever's only, for all of them?
What, so, for the 50, for all the units that are in.
Only the ones that are in Maynard.
Right. One of the other questions I posed was if we can get the credit, because now the man, DHCD requirement, which I think came in in 2013, that requires three-bedroom units, which we've had that discussion before, that required to build three-bedroom, whether or not they, even if they don't want them. But whether or not all those three-bedrooms could be located in Acton. And, you know, that's still kind of being vetted out, whether we could get the full credit if all the three-bedrooms are in Acton, which ultimately, you know, is, is probably desirable for the project anyway. But, you know, it comes to the conversation of school impacts, three-bedroom versus, you know, the two or one.
Does half a development go to one school and half a development goes to the other school?
Depending on where they live.
That's what it sounds like, right?
And one of those units may actually be split in half with the town. Is that accurate?
One of the.
I heard that based on the plan that was presented, one unit, the town line went literally right through one of the units.
But it's a.
Yeah, so, the reality is, the unit, the unit count is wherever the head of household sleeps. So, the way they determine that, when you have, when you have a.
Don't change your bedroom.
When you have a line, it's if they're theoretically, if the master bedroom is located in Maynard, that house is in Maynard. It doesn't matter, you could have 3,000 square feet of the rest of it in Acton. It's wherever the head of household sleeps, their head is the address or location of that dwelling. So, if it's, if it's signed, you could, which I don't know, you know, wherever that line is, it may theoretically go through one of those units. But if the master bedroom's on the Maynard side, it's a Maynard.
That might be the most ridiculous thing I've ever heard.
Yeah, but that's how they determine.
Sounds like a fuller explanation of what's about to happen. Seems like there could be problems with that.
Concept plan we had actually, actually lists, actually lists 42 units in Maynard. They were playing with it. They, I think they want to try to get that to 50 of the units in Maynard and have the office, the other units all in Acton. But they also have.
Turning all the master bedrooms around.
They also have potentially had the discussion with the school committee about opening up, because they haven't, historically it's been closed to choice in, but allowing that development to choice into Acton, even if they're.
Our committee's on board.
Our 50 units, if there's children in that.
So, you're saying, you talked to.
No, we, we haven't spoken any, but that's what.
But that's the committee you're referencing, ours.
Correct.
Acton's. Because we're the one that's closed to choice right now. What did you say?
Acton is interested in increasing their enrollment.
So, they've had a decline in enrollment, which is common throughout the state. You know, their enrollment numbers have been dropping, but opening that development up to allow them to, and they haven't said okay to that, but that was some of the hypothetical conversation, is if, okay, you know, 200 of the units are eligible to attend Acton schools, then the other 50 would be as well, even though they're technically in Maynard, just for that project.
I'd love to see the demographics that they're driving that actually think that this project actually makes sense for Acton at all.
Acton is 100% behind this. They're, Acton wants to get up to 10%. They're absolutely, they had, they had housing representatives that were ready to sign today.
So, it's all about, it's all about meeting their affordable housing number, that's it.
Correct. And it's a great project for, you know, the project is the furthest thing removed from Acton, right?
Yeah.
It's like where the.
So, wow, it's mainly waterfront property.
And I'm sure they'll use.
Yeah.
Is that an harbor?
So, yeah, exactly. I mean, they get 25% of the units are affordable housing, but they get the credit for 100% of those units. So it's a good project for them, at least it gets, you know, their number up, and, yeah, they were quite shocked at how Maynard has only had one forty B project, and, you know, they have, they had the big Avalon project and I think some others.
With a little more land.
Yeah. Want to come?
All right. Keep us up to date.
I thought you were going to update us about the police issue on DeMar Street.
We didn't get there yet.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, you said you had this big thing you wanted to talk about, I thought that was going to be it, and I was shocked that it wasn't.
It's still under investigation, I wouldn't want to compromise that.
Yeah, because that, that phone hasn't stopped ringing, the bat phone is ringing all day, like I know what's going on.
Yeah.
It's your neighbors that are looking at it, grab them.
I know.
Walk over here tonight on the way home.
Peek my head in.
See if they'll let you in. Anyways, yeah, so the, so the, my, I was just going to ask that question, I have a couple others, but I'll send you an email on those, and, that's it, Terrence, anything?
Yeah, just so, can we reiterate what the rules are in this town about the sidewalks in front of your house and your responsibility as a homeowner? Because on the Boston Globe website the other day, there was something posted, and it had Maynard's rules, and if that's true, we're not following them whatsoever with regard to clearing the sidewalks in front of our streets.
Yeah, our, our regulations, they require...
There's, there's whole streets with sidewalks that no one's touched.
Right.
And I just assumed that we didn't have as breadthly of rules, but when you look on, and you click and you compare to the other communities, it apparently has a metric that tells you what the bylaws are, and if you're in compliance or so, and we weren't, but as were, a lot of other communities weren't either, but...
Yeah, it hasn't actively, really, rarely actively been enforced, you know, from like a code enforcement standpoint, but we try to encourage everybody to follow that.
There was some discussion on that several years back, and for example, up in my neighborhood, in the summertime, we have sidewalks on one side of the street, but nobody ever uses them in the middle of the summer because they walk their dogs in the middle of the street, because there's not much traffic.
Right.
And the issue was, if we are going to, if we're going to actually enforce the shoveling policy, you're going to have people out there shovel on a hundred feet in front of their house, that is, frontage, on a sidewalk that nobody ever uses, because it's, because it's the requirement.
In the wintertime, they might use it.
Hmm?
If it's shovel, they might use it.
It's, you know, I think the neighborhood nature, but then the discussion at that time went to, okay, but then you got Summer Street, where people want to use the sidewalk, and then that needs to be somehow cleared, but we have the, the snowplow thing that goes running down through the major streets, and so, you know, the issue at that point was, well, then you have people who get the benefit of the snowplow thing, and if we're going to have a snowplow thing, and it's going to go down some streets, it should go down every street, so everybody gets the benefit of having their sidewalk shoveled.
Yeah, I mean, you, I, I would just like this is consistency, if we have rules, you own a house, I don't care if you have two hundred feet in front of your house, you should be shoveling it so people can get down there, you know, different than anyplace else, you know, so, I mean, I know it's an inconvenience, but hey, it's a sidewalk, it's public space, right?
Yeah, I think it's, I think you have to take the, the nature of the community.
Do you suggest that we enforce or that we change the rule?
I, I'd like to find out what the rule actually is, really, to be sure before we go.
But that is accurate, you're required to take your...
That's what happens, the winter goes by and then we forget about it.
Supposed to be clear, it was definite, that, that was the discussion several years ago.
I did mine for years, but it ended at my property, and it ended at the other end of my property, and so if somebody want to jump over a six-foot snowbank to get on the plowed sidewalk...
And then walk for a hundred, a hundred feet.
I've got a lot of land, I got a lot of, I got a lot because I'm on a corner, it's a long frontage. I probably have more sidewalk in front of my house than almost anyone in town, literally, to be all the way around to the back, right? And I would try, I would clear it every time, because I, you know, just sit on the tractor, what do I care? There's nothing, they're not bothering me any, but none of my neighbors did anything, so I stopped, but, you know, no one in, no one in, in that whole neighborhood does it.
Well, it just seems that, you know, we're going this whole route, complete streets, we're trying to make this a walkable, drivable, bike city, and, but yet, winter comes along and nobody wants to chip in because it's extra work, I mean, that's what it comes down to, you know, they've gotten away with it for years, so if the rule's there, we should enforce it, and if it's not there, on the side of the town, we don't want to enforce it, we should take it off the books.
It is there, and you are required to clear the sidewalk immediately in front of your home.
Yeah, I'd like to see what the clarification is for if you live on a route where the town plows the sidewalk.
I think you're going to get a lot of problems with people, they're going to tell you that, oh, if, you know, the contractor...
It's no different with Maynard.
Is burying my sidewalk with, you know, all this, the snow, you know, I don't mind moving it anyways, because like I said, my, my machine has a thing in front of it, I don't, it doesn't physically bother me at all, but if you go around the corner, you know, what's, what's my neighbor going to do? She's, she's a, you know, she's a single mother with two kids, it takes her six hours to do her driveway, if no one helps her.
Yeah.
What's she doing, because Lazaro just went down the street and created a six-foot fall over into her part of the sidewalk? She's not going to get it done, so how do you hold her responsible? You, is she going to pay someone to do it? I don't know, but it seems to me that, I don't disagree in some circumstances, but in others, it's just unreasonable. I don't know.
Similar to the fire hydrants, you know, we ask them to assist with cleaning, you know, clearing fire hydrants.
There's more self-interest in that.
Even the fire hydrants clean.
Huh?
You want the fire hydrants clean, but one thing about fire hydrants, they should all have that thing on them, and they don't just yet. There's a few that don't have the...
Flag.
A flag?
Flag, we need to replace those flags.
That's the official...
I know there's one, I know there's one in my neighbors' yard, just because it's been there forever, so I know where it is to hit it.
Right.
But the flag is, the, the metal flag is gone.
Yep.
But anyway, all right, Terrence, you're done?
I'm done.
Mr. Gavin?
Yeah, I'm, I just wanted to comment on Tim's resignation, regret, regret to see that, and then the second thing is, have you, has anybody been sort of in tune with the controversy going on with the dog park? You probably are.
Yes.
Where there's some issues with...
Yes, it's our fault, apparently.
Yeah.
Someone, there was a girl at my house in front of my daughters, who comes every Wednesday, and they walk their dog there, and she was barking at me about it, I was like...
No pun intended.
We did not, yeah, we didn't set the height of the snow or anything, we just said that, and they set their own rule, that they said if there's more than three inches, you know, it won't be this, and insurance and everything else, so the, the rules are set. I don't know who, I don't know what the controversy is, the rules are, if there's more than three inches of ground on the snow in the parking lot, in, in the park, you can't go in the park.
And they hold, they, they hold the license, so it should be their determination.
So all of a sudden, it's our responsibility, so I said no.
Three inches versus five inches.
Yeah, nobody does, the, the issue is also, I guess, one of the members of the dog park went over and plowed it out.
Right.
And that's probably not a wise thing to do, because if something happens, the town is the one that's eventually liable for this.
The May Dog Board spoke to that individual, told them that they couldn't do that, and immediately notified Aaron and myself.
So we didn't set the height...
I support the May Dog's decision.
Right, we didn't suppe, we didn't, we did not set, as the board, the snow height or any of the regulations. They set them, we just, we just approved...
Correct, if, if the conditions are such that, you know, it's icy or snowy conditions that they feel, or, you know, or potential, then they have the authority to close the park, and that's what they do. In fact, this was part of, this was part of the initial first year, where we didn't even allow them to operate.
Correct.
And then, you know, that became, it was closed, you know, indefinitely through the winter. Then we became, was kind of, okay, let's make it, because we had winters even like to this year, where, you know, it was sixty degrees in December, it would have been foolish, why not be able to enjoy the dog park?